Like to call a meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hamlet Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health being held Tuesday. January, excuse me, Monday, January 31st, 2022, in the Townhouse Auto Car, 6:00 P. M. Meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing technology as approved by the Governor's March 2020 Executive Order. Please stand for the pleasure.
Let me leave this to the flag of the United States of America. And to the call, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I'd like to thank my colleague and everyone who. Point when we had it canceled last week, I had an unexpected emergency and couldn't attend. Thank you for your patience and indulgence. First item on the agenda is minutes of January 10th, 2022.
Yeah, I think everything was here. Make a motion to approve January 10th, 2022 minutes.
All in favor? In the January 10th, 2022 executive session.
Yeah. Motion to approve January 10th, 2022 minutes executive session.
All in favor? Is the senior center budget.
Hi.
Hi. How are you?
Good.
Good. Good. Oh, so you've got the budget. I, you know, it's a pie chart season. Oh, I like it. It's my favorite season. Yep. So I have a little pie chart for you. So they'll all get a handout.
To the apple?
Multimedia.
Just, it's just so you can see how, how we spend our 1%.
Oh, where you are.
We're green. We're the little green slimmer.
I see what you did there.
So just to say, we've held our 1% for quite some time.
1%.
So the senior center budget is very, very straightforward this year. Salary increases were made using the calculations that were sent over by the Treasurer's Office. Oh, there it is. That were sent over from the Treasurer's Office, so I made those changes to salaries. Everything else I kept at level funding. Our expense line has been tracking really well, so I didn't see any need to increase that. I haven't seen a drastic increase in utilities or building maintenance, so I felt comfortable keeping those numbers the same for next year instead of just doing an arbitrary, you know, throw in some extra money, just for the heck of it. I didn't think it was necessary. I have, I, I have a significant amount of money right now in the utility line, and I know that's because these Syncarfa credits to the town. Solar, how that affects the line item. So if I get a zero utility bill, I submit that, but then it doesn't come off out of my account until later in the year. So my tracking is a little bit different, but I didn't see any need to increase those numbers for next year. So really, we're at a, that's a lot of service for us. Yeah.
I did have a conversation with Becky about this earlier, and I think she makes a good point about the, it's tough to to really analyze the utility line because the way the power purchase agreement, we've all seen the Syncarfa bills come in. And credit to Cliff and Susie for figuring it out. However, noting, and Don, you've seen this happen, and Bob as well, noting that the utility companies consistently ask for rate increase. At some point, that increase will factor into our actual utility rate. So I think we should hold them back for a minute. Once we do get a recap from Cliff and Susie, there should possibly be an adjustment to this line coming forward. It's held the line for the past couple of years, and that can't be continued. Rates do go up. They applaud them. They turn the heat down to 20 when they leave, and it's really, you know, really won't end.
Is it, is it different because you weren't open the amount of time?
Not drastically. I mean, staff was still in the building, so, I mean, we heated it and cooled it. You know, I mean, we didn't turn my sun, you know, to a lesser extent, but not enough to make like it huge, to see a big impact from one year to the next.
Tough to say what the kitchen use would have been, but that's about it, right?
Yeah, the kitchen use. I mean, we, electricity wise, you know, with the dish machines, maybe the gas, gas bill would have been a little bit higher with the gas stove. You know, lighting, it's, to turn on one more light switch isn't going to really impact that significantly.
And I asked you this before, and you've already got your new computer upgrade.
Yes, we purchased the database, so we'll have staff training on Monday, the 7th is when they'll come in and train us, and then it should go live next week. That'll be great.
Now, what about the, I hear program coordinator?
Yep, so the program coordinator, that is a vacant position right now, but that has never been town funded. That is funded through the grant at the bottom there, the formula grant. So that's, just so you know, I do have that position, and if the town were funding it, that would be the rate according to the Collins study. But it is all paid for out of the formula grant.
The part-time spot?
It is part-time. Yeah, I just posted it last week. Nan Robert had been with us, and she retired. So I did post it for 18 hours.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for stopping by.
Of course. Thanks for having me. Enjoy the pod.
I'll, I'll, Becky, before I go. How's attendance?
Attendance has been good. Yeah, our meal program is still outside, drive-through. But our exercise programs are back. We still have a really robust art program going on. We just started a new craft class series, so we've been getting good traffic, good attendance. Yeah, very good. Thank you.
All right, fire department.
So we submit our budget to you for a speed look over.
Next year.
Well, it's 21, 21. So the, the salaries, the salaries you have here, is that, I guess what I'm saying is you're hired to recruit people, so are they getting the current rate? Are they getting the current rate?
We advertise, we posted the one job at just that one, the low rate. I mean, they're not getting a, you know, stuff. It could be great that we posted that individual is starting $23 a second.
And the, and now you got two hours overtime. Everyone gets two hours overtime each week.
Yes.
The way the schedule is.
Yeah, so it was always figured into their salary that way, that's why I included it. And what that does is everybody, now you're training for two hours, they come in. Even if they don't live in town, like have them there to work with the other firefighters, it allows them the two hours because they're working, they get two hours overtime as well. 40-hour week.
You should have to come back. Does your call staff get per diem for those two hours too, or?
So the call staff works on a training stipend. They have to make 80% of trainings, if there's any mandatory training, and they have to make X amount, you know, a certain percentage of calls. The probationary firefighters were never paid hourly. They were kind of like, you're, you're welcome to join us if you want. I did start paying them minimum wage last year, so they are qualified also for a small training stipend coming up as well.
What's the change in department operations?
Change department operations is the three items that I included. It's a maintenance agreement for the.
Oh, I got you now. Good.
All right, okay.
And. Would you say the bulk of the changes is that, that part plus then the mandated salary increase? There's no hour change? There's no?
No, there's no hour change. There's no additional staffing. It's just maintenance agreements on these expensive purchases that town made that I brought forward to the board, so I thought, you know, if you spend this much money, if something goes wrong, you know.
Maintain it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the recommended percentage for salary.
Yes, that's a call up.
That's what you calculated this file?
Yes.
Okay.
I got these, I got the salary numbers of the treasurer.
EMS supplies. Isn't, doesn't our action contract, they're supposed to buy those for us or replace those?
Yeah, so we're on a call and say we, we may get there a few seconds before then, we'll bring our first due back in. If we end up using stuff, they give us back pretty much one for one wherever we use. Some stuff, if they're not in town, that we deal with other agencies. Some stuff expires. Some of the stuff on the shelf does expire. We replace. The A D, for example, the particular pads expire. We have to replace those. Those aren't on our warranty coverage. They're all paid, they need to tell them they don't cover that part of it. So things, things like that. We also pay for our social services license out of there. Our state fees, DLS fees come out there as well. We just try to, you know, if we do do any training.
The stuff that does expire, just off topic. You get reimbursed from the state if it goes bad, if you don't use it, or is there some type of like?
No, we, we simply try to use it in our training, or, you know, use it up that way, so that we don't ever try to sell something out.
Yeah, that's, I was wondering, is this a layer?
How's the, how's the, the, the trucks' equipment, those? What are you doing on that? Any problems?
We're, we're doing pretty good. We have some repairs this year, as you know, our engine to the.
No, unfortunately.
The fitting from the tank to the pump actually run it out on us. We had to bring it over and have that replaced. It wasn't minor, but the water we use, it's not, you know, water, rock, sticks going through it. So fortunately, that's what, that's what it is when we drop water. So it takes, it takes a beating on some of the, some of the components of the trucks inside. The tanker right now, it got a full, all the valves been replaced on it. Being able to drop water, so that's going to be repaired next week, the final stage of it. It's 99% there now.
Anything else?
No, it's a pretty good job, chief. You're doing a lot in alignment.
Yes, I do. Try it.
Excellent.
Thanks, sir.
Sorry, well, you guys want to work on the pie chart for tomorrow?
I think it should be multimedia, but it gives some good lessons.
Let's talk about pies making hunger.
Well, thank you for your time, Steve.
Building assessment, town hall.
This came in on the 28th. This is one. I did send this to you earlier, yes. Was this still? In order to be able to get funding from the Massachusetts Office of Disabilities, we have to have a plan in place. The 2017 plan was good, but they won't accept it for their purposes. And so we have to update it. So I called the company that did it originally, Architecture East Long Meadow, and asked them for a proposal to update the plan. It would be both accessibility and it would also evaluate this building and what we would need to do to this building if the town decides to stay here to make it useful for the next 30 to 50 years, so.
So there's one proposal for this building.
And one for the other, yes.
So I guess my question is on the other three buildings.
Yes.
Do we really need that? I mean,
Actually.
Really newer buildings, there, even the architects.
I, I really don't think that we do.
And we just had the senior center architect in there and the fire station guy.
Yep. And both the highway department is going to be accessible, and the fire station project is underway, that will be fully accessible. Senior Center is already. So just a matter of.
So. Is there one copy of anything for the good building?
Yeah, I don't want the other three too.
Anything for the.
Yeah, this is just the senior center police station, DPW. Is there one for, yeah, this building?
Yeah, there is.
So we have that?
Yeah.
It's the same one we had.
The same one. I, I sent this to you by email.
You have extra copies of that, Bob? I didn't get a copy. Lots of free building copies.
There's a number here, 23,000 for the assessment?
Yes. I, I spoke with the, the auditor about this, and he said that we have funding available that will enable us to get this done without tapping into the general fund.
Who said this?
Cliff said that we can take revolving fund money for this. Yes.
Really?
Yes.
And the building inspector was going to be needing that extra $24,000.
He said it's been sitting there for a long time.
I doubt that. We sweep it every year, so.
No, no, actually, that's what I said. Don't, aren't you legally required to sweep it?
Yeah.
He said, well, he hasn't done it, and I said, isn't, that's the D O R objective, and he said, no, they haven't. So.
So just for clarification, the part that says building assessment program space and needs, that's going to look at structural and mechanical this way?
Here's the, here's the other one. Pre-existing conditions, code review. Schematic design feasibility. Building the assessment program space needs 23 grand.
Yes, but is it going to look at the campus stuff?
I've looked at everything, yes, in the, in the building here, in this building.
Pre-existing.
We did not expect an estimate at this level.
That's what I'm saying. I think this is, you know, if you have a $4,000 or $5,000, we could take it up, town hall maintenance, something like that. This is a number barely covered by a reserve fund. I'd like a little more in writing. I understand Cliff's point, I understand Hobie's point, and like something in writing from the three of them plus the town treasurer, that this is an appropriate use of revolving fund. Okay. I have no problem with the firm, known Kevin for a number of years. You've worked, remember Don for Charlie Smith, you know, so.
This is a very significant increase, though, over the earlier estimate that they gave us, which was just for this building and for accessibility. We are talking, we are talking here about, I said to him, what we want to know is what needs to be done to this building for the town to decide to stay here to make this building usable and available as a public facility for the next 30 to 50 years.
I think the original, if you look back at 2017, it was at the $3,000 or $4,000 range from the last time we got it done, right?
I'm interested to be sure that we're looking at the mechanical piece, because the heat was out this weekend, right?
Look at the building assessment. Site paving, roof, walls, windows, interior, accessibility, utilities, heating, plumbing, electrical surveys are not included at this time. Right.
Right.
Specializing consultant of each environment testing report. So this doesn't do mechanicals. Right.
It doesn't?
This one says here, it says, building utilities, heating, plumbing, electrical surveys are not including at this time.
The whole of the windows is good.
I talked to him basically about structural issues, including the foundation, need to replace windows physically upstairs.
If you look at the wall over here, bowing out, yep.
Yeah.
Foundation issues.
You know, the tiles are coming off the wall.
Yeah.
Look at the windows, the leak coming in from there.
Yeah.
Based on that, I would have thought that this, this quote would have addressed known deficiencies in the prior report, i.e. structural, et cetera. And updating those, I, I, it's a good firm. I think they should do a better job of like looking at that and providing this quote as an update to prior notified deficiencies. And Craig, you know, picking that up is, that's big. You walk out of here, and the heat's still not working.
Yeah.
Are they working on Marroy's assessment?
It wasn't Marroy.
It says it was Marroy right there at the top. Yeah.
I thought Marroy did the full boat. That was, that's my recollection.
I think we put it on, we put it on the web one time, Bob.
It's all the ones.
It's on the one. I'm not. So I think we can do two things. We can go back to them and say, we think this is a little too rich.
Yeah. A little too rich, but it doesn't cover some of the items that we want, like the mechanicals.
Or we could do some bidding.
Well, let's see what they can add.
Let's go back to that and see what they got first. Right?
You know, I, I have to say that it took, well, this has been on our agenda for three weeks. It did take a good deal of time before this proposal came in, and I think we may have a situation like we see in a lot of businesses today where there's plenty of business.
They don't want to do it, so they bid high.
I don't want to use the term highball, but, you know, that, that kind of thing happens.
I'll sail today. All right, so you're going to, you're going to check, you're going to go back to them.
I'm going to go back to.
Employee handbook?
I found some other issues with the employee handbook.
All right.
So I just assumed, have some more time to work on that. I can tell you what they were. It all has to do with the whole Medicare and town employees and all those options. I, I need to do more work.
Put that off, okay. Used car license for Robert Wren, I believe he's on.
He is on. There's the file in front of you with the blue permit.
All right. Are you on, Robert?
He was.
He is.
I see him.
Yes.
Unmute him. He's muted.
Hello? He's talking.
Can't hear you, Robert.
And I think he's unfamiliar with the system. How can I tell him to unmute himself?
He is unmuted. It's just his microphone might not be set up properly on his.
He's still muted, so.
Oh, now it shows as muted. It wasn't a second ago.
Yeah, but as the host, can't you unmute somebody from your screen, Bob?
I can. I'm asked, will I do is ask him to unmute.
He's doing what I'm asking about?
He's unmuted now.
Can you? No.
Yeah, I mean, his little microphone's not going up and down there.
It's the microphone.
And isn't. Because you've seen when we talk, it gets a little bar graphic, it was up and down. For him, he's not, he's talking, it's not moving.
So what, what are we trying?
I, I can give you some background. From, from what he explained to me, he has been a resident in Florida and Massachusetts. When he was in Florida, there was a tax advantage to becoming a resident there, and he could only hold the license in one state. So the tax benefit was like 50 grand. So he said, okay, I'm going to be a resident in Florida, but I still am conducting business in Massachusetts. Unbeknownst to us, this has gone on, I think, for a number of years as he does six months and six months and comes up as he needs to for business. But I, I don't know that it affects the license, which is why I just wanted you to be aware of it.
I was reading our bylaws, and I don't see anything in our bylaws that limits a person's residence to being able to operate a business in town. So I don't, I don't perceive it being an issue on our end personally.
Any sharing property with?
With the Steve, let's say Ferrara.
As long as.
And I think that goes back to our point before, we asked Hobie to look at that, i.e. when, for instance, Business A was said, okay, you could be, you can have 20 cars in your lot. Then somebody sublets, he brings in 10, that exceeds the total. The balance has to be maintained for the, almost like the parking place thing.
The address.
Right, and, and there were not too many cars, but there were RVs mainly in the lot from what.
I would say it goes back to, the planning board authorized them for that location, right? The planning board at that address authorized.
Condition should be on that license. Right here, right in the front page.
The blue one or the actual application?
So limit vehicle store to the entire location, entire location, 29, 31, commercial drives, 20, right?
Okay.
Between the two.
Between the two.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
And they did not have 20, but they did have these other vehicles.
Yeah, well, those are the specials. All right.
So, motion to approve Robert Reen Auto Sales for a used car dealer license, pass two.
All in favor?
Hi.
I don't know if you can hear us or not, Robert, but we approved it. We'll sign it tonight.
Shake your head if you can hear us. Okay.
All right, we'll prove us that.
You're good.
Lucky he's in Florida or not.
Are you in Florida right now?
Are you in Florida?
Most warm down there. It's cold here.
It's cool there, too, I guess.
Is it cold down there?
I got an email from a friend in Naples, says it's 38 degrees.
Yeah.
Yeah, they talked about freeze with the citrus crops again.
Yeah, really, they raised the price.
Okay, no parking sign for Academy Hall. Right, boy.
I will give you the background that I heard from Linda Kravitz, who is the historical society. Lead and takes care of Academy Hall. There was a, the truck, you know, that used to park across the street that you tried to get to move, and apparently he moved around the block and. Was parking in behind Academy Hall, and of course, that's access to emergency vehicles. So Linda did speak with the police department, and I believe that they spoke with a gentleman, she said the last few times she's been there. The truck has not been. And of course, it snowed in at this point, but she went to Mark and Mark said, I can't put a sign up unless the selectmen allow, and. I suppose what harm can it do to? Put something there so nobody.
Where's the driveway back there?
Right around the back of the building. Yeah.
It's like right in the middle of the property, it's got the stone on either side, or stone on one side, right?
Do you need parking actually there or?
It's a garage entrance, so it's a small driveway, and then you can get into the garage from there.
His garage.
No. Academy Hall, sorry.
So several things, I mean, obviously the question is, A, did the house on the corner have enough parking for residents in the house, and that's why. The guy was parking on the street, then we go to the old parking seasons, now he's parking whatever driveway he can find. That's more of an issue for, was it properly invented for that part? Secondly, if it's not our driveway, it's somebody else's driveway, and that's not right. And it's, it is public land, now keep in mind, it is a public area, but it's also emergency access for that building. So I would have no problem with saying, you know, no parking without permission or something like, some sign to that.
Be okay with that.
You know. So we'll put a sign up appropriate for private, uh, private, or just for parking only with permission or something like that. Please take notice.
Yeah, second.
All in favor? You want, you want, is there a way we could get a hold, we're going on pretty good here tonight, I want to get a hold, is there a way to get a hold of Mark and see if he can come? Review the mask mandate policy.
Uh, I would say right now, you've all seen the email from Jane, uh, from our department. Has dropped down. Much as we expected, the, the spike has, I think we're down in thirties now. And I would recommend to the board that we lift the mask mandate for municipal buildings in Hampton.
Effective?
Immediately.
I would second that.
All right, what's the penalty?
Let's see, this is the idea, once you give them an inch.
The whole mile, that happens.
All in favor?
Throw them up in the air like you're old, like back in the sixties, I don't say what.
Okay. Now we're on a vote to exceed the snow and ice budget.
It's pretty, pretty typical.
We've had a lot of weak in snow.
Thank you, exactly, you know.
And a lot of lacing too, something like this, yeah.
Motion? Motion to authorize, uh, basically running the snow and ice in the red.
We need a motion to, to, to run it, that's it. Second.
So. He is allowed to spend, and then it, and it shows up wearing the cherry sheet layer on there.
We can either cover it at the end of the year, or, uh, it comes out of free cash. The following year.
There are two, there are two accounts that a lot run correctly, short-term interest is the other, Bob. Short-term interest is the other one that can run in the red.
If nothing else, if the town does nothing else, it comes out of state aid, so. I think the pattern here is that we try to cover the shortfall at the Maytown meeting.
Yeah, it shows up as a deficit.
So even the snow and ice has gone away by then.
And the problem is, of course, that you can never raise snow and ice because you can never bring it back down.
That's right.
You always have to be under.
Everybody underfoot is because once you at a certain level. You gotta stay there.
Right.
And so, especially with climate change, you don't know really where this is going. We had a very. Relative warm winter last winter, very little snow. Although we spent money on ice, yes, and so forth, but. It's risky to.
I can remember a few years back, our deficit was almost two hundred thousand.
If you look at Mark's chart, we're. Almost at where we were last year, as far as snow totals. Scuber of storms, I should say.
He's on his way, he is stopping at his office and.
Okay, uh, all in favor? We, we have, uh. Various for seven fifty-five Main Street.
Yeah, Smith's House, basically, it's a, a typical separation from groundwater, as recommended by the health agent. Recommend, or if they approve this request for various.
Second.
Separation from groundwater.
All in favor?
All right, that's why we're waiting for Mark, why don't we do, uh, selective reports?
Wonderful January. Meeting tomorrow night, a kind of a joint meeting between planning and appeals, as they are some issues to discuss. So COA, we had housing authority who was preparing a warrant article with the CPA, and Lisa and I will be discussing that with Doug.
Historical commissions meeting tomorrow night at seven. I think we're gonna get rolling on that. Downstairs. Posted?
Not on, yeah, not, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that either. Tomorrow?
Tomorrow at seven, yeah. There's usually that little room.
Yeah, we've got a, oh, they're gonna be down here and, okay, because we've got a.
I'm willing to things, by the way. The virtual. Because we're no.
Joanne just remembered CBA and Parks.
Well, they were both posted, and then Parks, CBA, whatever, well, they have reached out to Mark and told him I found another location for him for Mark.
Thank you.
What about Superintendent Gannam retiring?
Gannam is retiring.
So what does that do with the strategic, whole strategic plan thing, I mean, is the school committee prepared to be looking for a new superintendent?
I have not heard anything on that yet from.
Strategic plan that, you know, another superintendent, they have a totally different idea.
Could be, we'll have to see the next school committee meeting next week, I believe. It's coming up.
Did you get individual emails?
No.
I never.
It was just the, the joint email to the whole community. And just by listening into the, the school committee meeting that night.
I think there was nothing sent out, and.
I mean, I'm just wondering how this.
I mean, you would think that a new superintendent may want to have a hand in the strategic plan process, so. We'll be going back to the drawing board from square one, I mean, our next meeting's coming up in, in February, so I guess we'll find out more information then.
And then, you know, plus also, what are they gonna do with, you know, it's, it's a big deal finding a superintendent of schools.
Exactly, you gotta show notice too, right?
Use it in the school year. Use it to give like a year, you know. All right, uh, town administrator's report.
Okay, um, first of all, uh, I was not able to. Get this to you, wore the packet over the weekend, because I. Am somehow locked out of the system, and I still am. So.
Like, because I can click here and be on the.
I can't even see it, I can't even see it on my computer.
How about your quick?
On the OneDrive, yeah.
Don, you only see it on Monday, Tuesdays.
I can see it today, I can see it, I'm good today.
I related it to. Somehow, uh, the, the, the heating system failure affecting, uh, the server and, and that access, I don't, I don't know, I don't.
Can you get onto the OneDrive or if you're not going to the town server?
I cannot get on, onto the OneDrive or the server. I tried to get into the OneDrive, that failed, I can't even, I can't even see it on my screen. I then tried to VPN into the server, that didn't work.
Those are two separate entities too, so it's not, it's not like they're in the same location, so.
So.
Time for a new computer.
Craig will, what?
Time for a new computer?
No, I have a new computer, everything worked, this is the first time I've ever had this problem.
Well, it's weird, because the files that you talked about today were on the OneDrive, like, you must have put them on there.
Which files?
The budget, the fire permanent budget.
Yes. I put them on there before I left.
Today?
No, before I left on Wednesday. The budgets.
They came in last week.
Yeah.
That was the one you just emailed today saying, whoops, I had the wrong one.
That was emailed to me. By the fire chief and Jane this afternoon.
Right, and it's on the OneDrive.
It's on the OneDrive, I can get to the OneDrive from my desktop.
Oh, so you put it on there?
Yes, I can't, something has happened.
To the laptop?
My laptop, my personal laptop, and was unable. And still am unable, so, I mean. This is probably something they can fix remotely, so I didn't have a chance to do it today, but anyway. The most important thing that's happened in the last couple of weeks is that our meeting, uh, with the Fiber Optic Committee. And Whip City Fiber, where they, they reviewed the services that, that, that can be provided. And gave us a scenario for. Doing townwide broadband. There will be a significant cost. Much, I think, can be funded. With infrastructure and ARPA money, if the town chooses to do that. We still do not have town approval. The municipal light plant article that was passed in the fall has to be on the warrant again. In May. This is a long-term project. But I think, uh. If you look at it carefully. It is something that is in the interest, if we can make it work financially, very much in the interest of the town. It will provide. Something that most communities do not have at the present time, and that is competition. To win, to provide internet services. And, and clearly, if we're going to get cable bills under control. That's gotta be part of it, you've got to have a competitive situation. And secondly, the whole trend. Seems to be. That the people are cutting the cable, cutting the cord, as they say. Buying internet service alone. And then choosing streaming services. Such as Netflix and, and, uh, Hulu and, and, uh. The whole variety, and there must be twenty, twenty-five. You pay for streaming services. That seems to be the trend, I expect it to continue, and so in order to be able to do that. The town has to have options for residents. For internet services at a reasonable price. So. A lot needs to be said, a lot of education needs to be done, but I thought we had a very good session. With Whip City Fiber, which seems to be the firm that provides, uh, the service in our region. Certainly in the hill towns, now in West Springfield. And certainly worth continuing to discuss with them, not that any decision has been made. So that's where we are. I also posted the recording of that meeting on the town website. So, for those who would like to. Take a look. We've applied for the grant for an eighty AED unit. For the fire department, this would be a new AED unit, and the grant would, uh, be up to twenty-five hundred dollars. To replace an older unit that we have. As I said, contract negotiations have, have begun with the highway superintendent. And not quite the highway union yet, because the union representative was ill and unable to make the last session. We, you know about the employee handbook, which we're still working on, the board committee and commission handbook is completed. And it's going to be distributed to every board, every committee in the town. We participated in a cybersecurity grant webinar. And also another webinar, um, uh, from the Treasury Department about the final rule for ARPA. With regard to the cybersecurity grant webinar, we have received the grant. We will receive training for town employees through this grant. To help prevent ransomware attacks and other kinds of outside attacks on our system. It's basically just educate employees what to avoid and what to be, what to be, uh, what risks, uh, to avoid. Uh, the final rule webinar. Again, ARPA is complicated, but this was a very useful session. Also, if you're interested, the Mass Municipal Association is doing a webinar tomorrow. On the final rule, so. Let me know if you'd like, I think. Well, you can probably register for it right on the website, you can register five minutes before the program begins.
Do you know what time that is, by any chance?
Yes. No, I'll tell you right off the bat here. It's, uh. It's in the afternoon, I believe. I don't know, it's at twelve-thirty. Twelve-thirty tomorrow. Again, we've been asked if we want to participate with the town of Long Meadow. And perhaps other communities. To.
Run back that webinar thing, do we have a firm ruling that if Frank and I both attend this webinar?
No, you're fine.
It's not a bad thing.
You're fine. The rule says you can't deliberate, you can attend events of various kinds, you can attend informative meetings as long as you just watch. And so we've been asked by the town if we would like to participate in requesting a D L T A grant. Which would mean that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission would allocate some of their D L T A money. To serve the towns that join this group. For another shared service, which would be the hiring of a, a skilled and licensed conservation agent, so. We'll see where that goes, you just did receive the Architecture E L. Proposal. Uh, I've been, uh, in communication with our tree warden. We are all set now with the money, as well as a special revenue account. And he, I think I sent you an email where he is. Now going to contract, or now going to be in touch with a fourth firm that will be used intermittently. To address the whole problem of hazardous and dead trees. Resulting from the gypsy moth. Infestation. As town hall is now being sanitized every Tuesday. We may stop that if, if we are eventually in March over the hump with. Oakron. Police car issues. Talked with the chief several times. About cycling down. The two cars that are being replaced. That have over a hundred thousand miles. Can either be sold off. Or we can give one to the. ACO, Animal Control Officer. And sell off the car that she currently uses. And one to the building inspector, now I talked with the building inspector about it, he doesn't want one. So it's a matter of, do we want to cycle down one of the cars, I guess the best one. To the ACO, whose vehicle, uh, by all accounts is in poor condition.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Any objection to that? I got concerns.
Concerns like, we're taking two cars at a hundred thousand, I'd look more to the car in May. Which probably will have less mileage, maybe at that point we're down to a seventy thousand pound car.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're just picking the problem.
Yeah, we are.
You know, just. You know, just at that point, let's look at that car, I understand you're saying, well, the car in May, we're not going to get for another two years. But I just, we, I hate to say it, maybe that's the reason we have the problem now, when we gave an older car. It was a good move to make, if the town vehicles, nobody should have to put that situation in their own personal vehicle. But is that the right one? Only way I see you making it work is that since you haven't actually gotten the two new cars yet, the chief picks a different car for the second one that has fewer miles with an eye towards that car being annual town meeting in May. So if you're gonna roll one down, you're rolling something with seventy thousand and looking at the usage that Shelley would have, it'd be much more productive for a while, I'd like to see his answer on that, Frank.
Is Shelley's car right now in poor repair?
I asked the chief that question. Is one of your cars with a hundred thousand in better condition than the car that Shelley has, and he said yes.
Yeah, one of these two cars coming in.
Yeah.
Right, so. I'd like you to bounce it off the chief, what if we did the third car on the list and looked at making the second car the May car or whatever?
Will that set us back if we do that, if we upgrade it early, cruiser instead of an older one?
I'll see how it makes much of a difference with the miles we're looking now. Let's bounce, let's see what he thinks about that.
Okay, the water agreements from the past with the residents who have just received new water service have been located by Pam and I now have them and will have them changed, adjusted. And include the clause that you've suggested that this applies to the current residents only. We'll make the adjustments there legally and bring them in for signatures. That's the report.
Does that sound right, John? The current district right now, it's for owners and immediate successors, right?
Yes.
If they sell the house and they pay into the system, right, and that's what you're gonna suggest going forward?
That's the law we're adding into the report.
That's carried forward to the people.
We have four current agreements with the north side and that clause will be added there.
All right, finally budget.
By the way, great job by your team.
Over the weekend, thank you very much.
Well. My road was perfect, I can't speak for Don's road.
I did notice there's some water on my road, so I thought maybe.
Couldn't get it to dry fast.
He was out there with the bounty.
It's crazy.
Compared to other towns, I have to tell you.
You could tell when you crossed outlines.
We left, and not to mention, I think when we left Sunday morning, the temperature was six. Got cold fast. I mean, the roads were black and looked nice, but I had visions of black ice, but we never got it all back, so that was.
You were up for twenty-four hours? How you feeling today?
Alright, sluggish.
Caffeinated?
Yeah.
It was like the old days, back in your twenties.
That's all, yeah, it's just, I'm not bouncing back like, like those days.
Alright, so.
At the high point, besides salary.
Yeah. No change in any of the accounts, really straightforward, level services on the rest of the accounts, now the salary, you know, I didn't want to turn it into a budget and the cover letter I had sent off, I plugged that number in and I'd be more than happy to, I'd be more than happy to figure a number, you know, another number.
Oh, we know, we understand.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
I had a question about the street sweeping and basin cleaning, this goes back to basically our requirement with the MS four and things like that. Is that keeping pace with what we need to do, there was almost a question that, we remember Pam was, you're barely doing a third of what you'd be with the costs going up. Should we right now, and I don't want to say because we're in a decent position, but should we make a concerted effort to get that number needs to be?
To be honest with you, John, we're doing really well with that. Since we, since we're not using as much sand and stuff like that, we're, so we're able to keep up a little bit better. And I'm getting, past few years, I've gotten either all the town done or most of the town done, including usually I'll start with the, you know, permitted area for the DNP and then I'll work my way out this way and hit the trouble spots anyways, the hills and some of our other areas and go from, and go from there and, and we've been, we've been good with that. Sweeping in catch basin cleaning, to get, you know, both.
Over the hazard weight.
Yeah, and then, but, yeah. And so we've also, you know, been hauling that stuff away and that, that incurs a cost, so, you know, we're doing, we're doing pretty well with that.
Quick recap, where are we staying with the Culver problem on Warren Road?
Okay, Wednesday, Fletcher is coming in, coming into town with a camera service. We're going to enter that system from the corner of Raymond Drive and Wilberham Road, because that, that it's about twenty-three or twenty-five feet deep. And that goes to that concrete structure where the settlement is. And I'm hoping it's, I have a feeling it's right on the edge of the structure, the pipe is compromised just as it enters that structure, I'm hoping that the, the video will show that.
What's the concrete structure?
So, it's about a twenty-five foot concrete structure. And that takes a brook off of the mountain, crosses Wilberham Road and it also takes from that manhole on Raymond Drive, it takes all the stormwater from the top of the hill at Wilberham Road. And from there, from there, it exits somewhere out by the golf course.
Now, that's that diagonal line that goes behind somebody's property, I believe.
Correct. I was told when I started, go for a walk in the woods, look for a wagon wheel, it gets a tree, and there it is. While I walked out there for hours one day and I couldn't find a wagon wheel, I thought maybe the outlet was changed. So we, I've got some more investigating to do, if he has time, he's gonna send a camera down that way and see if we can trace it. Now, his concern was being the depth, he might not get a good trace on it, but maybe we can send it a little bit further where the, you know, where the ground kind of comes down and the pipes here and it's a little bit more shallow, we can get, we can get a trace on it. Because I don't know where it goes and I'm afraid that it may be under, I think it's one sixty-five, I'm afraid that maybe you know, a shed or there might be something on top of it, I just don't know, nobody knows where that line.
This happened and Pam, we're called something, Billy Trujakis came to us and I'm sure there's recorded easement about this as well. And that's why I would go back to the assessors and look at their map of that property.
Okay.
And look for the easement.
Okay.
Because there was this diagonal from that structure and it picked up the brook down by that, who's the guy, who's the guy that lived there?
Siniscautie?
And built that nice, anyhow, researched that, this had to be, you know, eight, nine, ten years ago, all of that. It was the previous owners, but you'll see, I think, a recorded easement from, that the town has to go back to that brook.
I will look.
That helps you locate the wagon, the wagon wheel, if not the whole wagon.
Yeah, well, so anyways, I want to get that, I want to get on that because, like I said, my concern is the depth, I mean, we can't dig that.
That lining stuff worked so well when we did it for Collin Farms, that pipe from the park, the river, that saved a ton of money.
But we have to see what's going on first.
Where do they send the camera on?
It's like a little robot, it's got wheels and they run it from their truck inside their truck and they've got a TV screen, they record it, put it on a USB drive for the customer, so I'll have possession of that, we can look at it, you know, when.
And then they did a basic robot thing, it sprayed the inside of Culver, basically rolling the shell inside.
Just sprayed it in there. Yeah, they've got some really cool stuff that they, that they do with that.
Clever, those Americans.
How much of a concern is it to the roadway right now, is it something that's been ongoing for a while or? Not that I'm aware of, no, I don't think there's any immediate concerns to the roadway right now. But if, like I said in my email, this goes on, on. You don't know where to go. Exactly. Yeah. And to dig a hole that deep, if we had to, would certainly go out into, I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be slowed down, stepped down. So, you want to just get on top of that. And so, yeah, as far as the budget goes, level funded on, on everything. I didn't know if there was any questions about, I had also included my capital stuff.
So you, you, the trucks been ordered, right?
Yes, sir.
Then you got, then you've got the Ford F-250 T3 2012, that's up for replacement.
Yeah, you know, I meant to put a note underneath that, I was gonna, I was gonna, I was going to try to do that in the fall. Again, just to try to keep up with a timeline, it's tough and this is a hard, this equipment, the trucks, I mean. So, that was a thought I had on and, but the main thing was gonna be to try for, for the mini excavator in the spring and I was going to try for the pickup. I'm sorry.
The Kubota.
Yes, yes. Which I also got the updated quote that I sent out. A tractor hanging in there though, huh?
I'm shocked, I'm shocked with the price of that tractor, the new Holland.
And that's just an estimate, to be honest, I haven't, I haven't gotten an updated quote for that. It could, yeah. Does that sickle bar add a lot of money to it, or is that just? As a new attachment, I think maybe it would be about eight grand, yeah, eight or ten grand. In relation to the tractors and that much? Correct. But it's, it's still going.
And then looking ahead just to FY twenty-four, you've got that nineteen ninety-three Mac.
Yes. So, I don't expect, I don't expect the price to be what it is on here, reason being is I'm contemplating going with just a little bit of a smaller of a truck. That can, that can accept our sliding sander, see, we won't need to, like the last truck that was off the top of my head. I took off some of the earlier years, but the last Mack dump truck was, was up there. But that was with the all-season body, stainless steel all-season body, which adds fifty, thirty to fifty thousand. We won't need another one of those, I've got stainless steel Sanders, sliding Sanders, now three of them, that I, if I say, for example, I was thinking like an F, like an F-six fifty or an F-seven fifty, I can put this seven-yard sander in there and it's a little bit smaller of a truck that we can use to, I mean, we can use it to tow our excavator if we get it. Use that hand in hand with our excavator, it'd be a little bit smaller, a little bit lower. You know, it'll be easier to load with the machine and stuff like that, not that we can't with the other ones, it'd just be a little bit smaller. And it'll still, you know, it'll still have an eleven-foot highway plow, so it'll still plow the same width of snow and it'll have the sliding sander, so that was my thought, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be nearly as, as expensive as, as the Mack.
What's, what's delivery on something like that, I'm just wondering from a timeline standpoint. I know you're talking about the following year, but if it takes a year to get these, are we smart to go ahead and put it on this year because you're not gonna see it for the following, this year or anything?
I really don't know, John, I could, I could try. I'd be open for that, sure, but I don't, I don't know, and I'll, I'll see if I can get an answer on lead time for.
Well, that's the thing, if it's a ten-month delivery, then we make a nice one for it, this year, it's not gonna be back to the following year.
Utilities, the new building, you think that's the same?
So last year, we had, I think so. And we'll have to keep the place now, the walls, I think we'd be, I think we'd be good with that.
Alright, any other questions?
The water working out well? Yeah, we seen the, the boating's gone away, right? It's dropping, it's getting better?
It's getting better, we're doing some work this week. Unfortunately, hasn't disappeared completely.
Paving looks good, nothing changing. I'm sorry. Paving, nothing's changing with that? No, I'm going to, I'll probably be submitting a list, I'm hoping, end of February, early March, something early. Now, the state. They're do, they're doing, they're doing something different with the bid, so I'm trying to, trying to come up with a way that makes sense to kind of exclude their involvement. And it's not just with the chapter ninety stuff, it's with even local bids for materials and services. So, what I'm thinking about doing is, you know, bidding out our, our materials and services, sweeping, catch basin cleaning, things of that nature, that's gonna be February. But then, I'm looking to, once I have my road projects approved by the Board of Selectmen, putting that out as one giant bid. So, say I've got five roads that need to be milled and paved with so much firm, I put that into one big bid, that's gonna be chapter ninety and then whatever is left over, it'll be, local funds will make up the difference. And that'll be, so then I'll just, I'll be doing the pre-qualification and the paperwork for the chapter ninety project requests and stuff like that with the state and it'll be done. Otherwise, I go through, if I was to put like pavement milling, reclamation, asphalt pickup and rolled in place, they get involved and it turns, it turns into a major nightmare. It's just what it is, it's a change, it's a change for, for me, it's a change for the town. I'm so close to just pulling the trigger and doing it that way, but I'm not quite ready. But I just wanted to, to let you know about that, but yeah, so the paving is, I have a list together, I mean, I've got a list. Because you didn't get everything done you wanted to last year. Oh, yes, right, so we do have one project left over on, on a section of North Row and I may have some extra money I can open maybe. Is that funding coming from last year's budget?
Well, the current.
Current year, I'm sorry, current year budget? Highway maintenance, pavement. Because it's still covered under that? Yes. So we don't need additional? Absolutely.
I think that's a sidewalk around here, I was.
And then I guess, I don't know, what, to just talk about it now or what this is. Thank you very much.
Well, we can say we approved.
Go back, get the salt, get the CS, get it back.
Anything else on the budget? I think, we'll move on, we have, I think we obtained a motion for, don't go away, that you're, I think you're. We'll move on, we have, I think we obtained a motion for, don't go away, that you're, I think you're.
I think we're at the point where it needs to down mark, the points that Bob has talked about, I mean, I think we can, you know, we're all. Make a motion to close the regular meeting, go into executive session for the purpose of contract. We can't do that, we have to be open, that's being open session. To actually do a contract with them, that's open session.
We're still in negotiations. Yeah, we're not gonna offer a contract, we're gonna negotiate.
That's what's on the.
Discuss.
You are executive with the cops.
The executive session is fine, as long as any kind of vote on any agreement or contract is done in open session.
Make a motion, close the regular session and enter into a executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations with the highway superintendent without a return to open session.
Second.
One favor.
Aye.